Twenty-four, we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee the whole to order roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum, and our first discussion item will welcome Chief Kyle Bergen to discuss a memorandum of understanding with Local Two-Forty-Eight. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Mayor, thank you. The first item you have before you is a memorandum of understanding. We have two lieutenants that were promoted in March. They are not clearly identified in the current union contract with the sergeant's group. This is a contract year. So, as we move through ratifying a new contract, a lot of these issues will be ironed out. So, this is just kind of a temporary thing to get us through the end of the year. And, um, once we get a finalized contract, a lot of these issues will be resolved. So, just looking for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
Thanks, Chief, and we can bring this to the council with that motion?
I'll offer that.
Thanks, Laura. Thanks, Scott, for second. Any questions for Chief Bergen on this issue? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign that motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Second is an update on the cannabis zoning ordinance.
Thank you. I'm gonna take a little extra time this morning, um, just to kind of cover where we've been and, uh, what, uh, where we need to go and what has happened in the interim. Uh, so the last, uh, meeting you had, uh, you had a recommendation before you for a zoning ordinance that allowed cannabis sales in a B-six and I-one through I-three zone. During that second reading, it sounded like that that ordinance did not pass. Couple of council members had requested, um, to, to take another look at what the Planning Commission had recommended. Uh, the Planning Commission had somewhat similar, uh, language, except for they allowed, um, the sale of cannabis in the B-three, which is the downtown zone, uh, with a conditional use. They had also indicated, um, the buffer of two-hundred-and-fifty feet. I think I had talked to you about something in between there that involved an interim use, uh, permit rather than a conditional use permit. Just so that everyone is aware, a conditional use permit, um, kinda carries forward in perpetuity. It becomes almost a property right to that, um, physical location. An interim use permit would stop or end with the person that's holding the license. So, um, I think some of the discussion that I've had from, uh, US Council is, you know, just having this ability to maybe, you know, if we start going down a path and we feel like we're doing the wrong thing or need to take some type of corrective action, that there's a, the ability to undo what we have set forth. And I think this allows for that. So, an interim use would allow you to, um, uh, allow a cannabis business in the B-three zone, and you could set that limit from one to five years. Uh, it could be renewed after that. So, that is before you right now. And, uh, just before I get into that any further, on June twenty-fourth, uh, the Office of Cannabis Management finally put out, or they started taking applications for cannabis licenses. That was on a Monday, the Friday morning before they finally put out this forty-six-page manual. So, the rollout from the state has not been good. Another example of frustration on business side of things is, um, there's a social equity component to this. If you've had a prior marijuana violation, you get preference. You get to go into this lottery system early to get a license. Well, the state has also passed a law that expunged everybody's marijuana convictions. So, now these people are trying to apply for a license, and all these records have been expelled. So, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's just another example of how poor this whole process has been by the state of Minnesota. So, I get that there's a lot of frustration from business owners. There's a lot of frustration from us and government. And we're just kind of trudging through this the best that we can, so. The other thing that we talked about as a committee is how building codes and fire codes, um, pertain to these cannabis, uh, businesses. And originally, we were looking at amending our ordinances to deal with some of these issues. And I just think in, um, the amount of time that we have, uh, to address this, that isn't going to be a reasonable thing for us to get accomplished. And I think a better way to accomplish that is through this interim use process. We can set those types of conditions, um, when we, um, issue the interim use permits. So, I think that kind of alleviates one more burden that we have in a very compact timeline. The other thing that we learned is that, um, we as a city will have some say in who gets a license within our community. Originally, it was believed that the state would make the decision, um, but the material that was, uh, put out on June twenty-first, uh, says the city will have some sort of say in, in who is issued a license within our community. So, we have one other ordinance, um, that we have to get accomplished, and that is a registration ordinance. We will be working on that and bring that to you. But in that registration ordinance, um, it will talk about things like hours of operation. Um, it will talk about how many licenses you as a council decide that you want to issue for the city. So, I just bring that up so that you have more information as we kind of delve into this, the zoning issue. And then the last thing I want to talk about is, I've had some conversations with the county in the interim. I won't name the cities, but there's at least three other cities within Otter Tail County that are looking at, um, allowing cannabis sales within their communities. So, we're the only city within the county that it's mandated that we allow it because we're over twelve-thousand-five-hundred people. Um, but I just want you to know that there are other, uh, cities, uh, in Otter Tail County that are looking at, um, allowing sales. We've had some brief discussions with, with county staff as, as far as trying to keep, uh, our, at least our registration laws consistent, um, across the county. And obviously, zoning is gonna be more specific to each community. And then the last thing is, I think, uh, Councilmember Kramer had asked about other cities, what they're doing as far as, uh, allowing sales in the downtown area. And the only, uh, city that I was able to find that's addressed it kind of in our area is Brainerd. And they do allow for sales. They call theirs Main Street, and then I, I don't know if the other area was called the Downtown Corridor or something similar to that. But that is through, I believe, a conditional use permit, so. So, before you, you have a copy of the ordinance. Again, it talks about allowing for an interim use, uh, in the B-three zone. Uh, you as a council will have to approve that interim use. Um, I think there's one potential error that we'll have to check on. Uh, on the second page, when we talk about B-six, I see that cannabis retailer is not included in there. And we've had some discussion as staff as whether that should just be allowed without, uh, an interim use permit. That's what you voted on last time, is just allowing, uh, retail sales in a B-six zone. But like I said, I see that that is not clearly worded here, whether that would just be allowed, be allowed through a conditional use, or be allowed through an interim use. If you go on to the industrial zones, there we're switching from an interim use to a conditional use. And a lot of that, again, has to do with addressing some of the building codes, some of the health codes, and fire code issues. The second piece, if you, if this is the avenue that you wanna go, I think you're also going to have to amend the interim use ordinance. So, that's a separate ordinance, and Ralph will have that prepared for you as well. Just, um, that cannabis sales would be, um, something that would be, um, an option under an interim use permit. It's not currently listed there. So, with that, if there's questions, I'll certainly try to answer them the best I can. The last thing I'll just say is, you know, we are running out of time, and you do have to pass something. If you don't pass anything, you're doing more harm to the community by passing, you know, the B-six or this. Either one of these, I think, is, is, uh, acceptable. Um, I would have been fine with the B-six. I'm fine with this. I'm just saying, you as a council, you really need to, um, kind of make a decision on this.
Thanks, Chief. It just, and, and on that last point, the timeline then would be this, uh, if the council wants to, does recommend this, it would potentially have its first reading at the, uh, July fifteenth, council meeting, and a second reading at the first meeting in August. Is that how you see it?
Yeah.
And that gives you enough time, that gives...
And then how long is it have to be published? So, I mean, we're getting August, September by the time this is, yeah.
Just so we, uh, understand that we are on that timeline, and we need to move on this. All right, so, um, look to, yeah, we'll, we'll take questions, we'd look to move, uh, have a motion to move this to the...
Make that your own.
City Council on Monday night. Thank you, Anthony.
Oh, second.
Second, Scott, questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, just thanks again for all your work on it. I can tell that you've really put in the time and even brought visual materials, which is, uh, um, I guess it's, it's really neither here nor there, but I would, I would be curious to see how the codes apply to just like a regular greenhouse versus, you know, a cannabis business. You know, that's just kind of the first thought that popped into my head while I was sitting here, but we don't, we don't have to delve into that. And, uh, yeah, I'm not surprised to hear that Brainerd's allowing it, you know, in their downtown. I mean, as I've always said, I mean, it's just kind of the way things are going, and, um, it's, all it would be is just denying, you know, businesses a chance to, to be an entrepreneur, make some money, and, um, and denying, you know, a lot of people in our community that that's what they want. And, and so I guess, yeah, ideally, what I, what I'd like to see on, on Monday night is, um, is an ordinance where, you know, it's allowed downtown by interim use. And, um, and then, yeah, as far as the B-six goes, I don't, I mean, permit, no permit, I don't, I mean, I kind of like the idea of the interim use permit because it does give the council some, um, some ability to regulate. And, um, you know, if somebody shows up and they're a real cowboy and, and just, you know, causing trouble and whatnot, we can say, well, you know, well, there goes your permit. Kind of like, I would imagine, the same type of thing we could do to an alcohol business if they, uh, didn't, didn't toe the line. So, um, yeah, so that's, that's what I would love to see come out on Monday night. I think that's perfectly agreeable, and, uh, I hope we can do that.
Thanks, Tom. Chief, one question. The, um, interim use by law allows, as you mentioned, one to five years. Is that per, is that determined individually, or is that in the ordinance?
No, so that is individually.
Okay.
You, you, I mean, this is the, the other part of this ordinance is, this gives you, the council, almost the fullest amount of control that's allowed by law, and it gives you the, the most flexibility as well.
Sure.
What you, what you, uh, looked at last week was basically, if you were in a B-six zone and you met the requirements, you didn't need any other approval from the city, and the city didn't really have any other control over you. So, a lot of times, people might say, you know, one is more business-friendly than the other. I would argue what you voted on last time is probably more business-friendly in the sense that there's not so much government oversight. This one, yeah, maybe it allows you to operate in different areas of town, but you're gonna have to go through more hoops, so to speak, in order to do that. So, it does give you, the council, a lot of control, a lot of flexibility, and you are the ones that will determine, is this gonna be a one-year, a two-year, a five-year, uh, interim use permit? Like I said, that interim use permit can be renewed.
One quick question about the interim use permit. Would there be a fee to the applicant every time they needed to renew that? Do we have any idea about how much that would be? I mean, we don't wanna impose too much of a burden.
Three-hundred-and-fifty dollars is what our conditional use permits are, so we would like to do something similar.
Okay. Clara?
I just, one point of concern with doing across-the-board interim use permits is, by definition, interim use is a use that's not by right allowed in that zone. So, if we're saying our entire city is by interim use only, what we're saying is that it's not allowed by right anywhere in our city, and I think that could open us up to questions of, um, like the fairness of our zoning. So, I, I do agree with Kyle. I think there should maybe be one spot in town where it is allowed without an interim use.
And I, and I think, you know, for the time being, as I read through this a little closer, the, the I-zone would technically be the one place where you could do it without the interim use. And I'll just say this, too. Again, this is just our starting point. You as a council are going to, you know, come back to this ordinance at some point in the not-so-distant future, just as things change. So, um, to Clara's point, you know, if you wanna start, like Tom said, with an interim use of B-six for now, I think that that's fine, knowing that you could go into an I-zone, you know, and you wouldn't need an interim use. But again, I think these are just things, um, that we can kind of jot down and help steer you as we go down this path and, and, um, you know, you know, maybe after two or three years of sales going on, you know, you, you'll have a better comfort level of, you know, what you should allow, where you should allow it, that type of thing. But, like I said, I just think this is important. I think this is a good starting point. And like I said, it, it doesn't lock you into anything that you can't undo down the road, so.
Thanks, Chief. And we have the motion to bring this. Um, we will obviously have discussion on Monday night opportunity.
So, are we going on, on Monday night, are we gonna change then to include kind of an I-zone being, you know, free of, of, uh...
Sure. The I-zone is currently listed, uh, where it would be allowed.
We'd put the conditional in that.
With the, with the conditional use. And the conditional use is just merely, again, it talks about, um, like on a retailer, there wouldn't be a ton of conditions. But on a manufacturer in an I-zone, there would probably be a lot of...
So, a, so a conditional use is, wouldn't, wouldn't, that, that would clear up Clara's point, or not?
Yeah. Interim, interim is saying it's not allowed.
Well, we're gonna, yeah.
And conditional is saying it is with condition.
With, with conditions, yeah. So, I think we, we'd be on good legal ground here. And the interim use, I'll just say this, too, is one of the uses that is clearly outlined in the state's handbook as well as an acceptable, uh, practice, so.
Would it be possible to email that, uh, the link out to the forty-six-page document to the council?
Yes, I will make sure that everybody gets a copy.
Yep, I just need the link. Thanks.
Scott, did you have a question, comment?
Yeah, I think, well, a couple of things. I was at the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference a couple of weeks ago. The Office of Cannabis Management made a presentation that was very well-attended, on this particular topic. And that book that you referred to had just been released a few days earlier than that. The general sense in the room was unhappiness, uh, from the leaders and the administrators, council members, and people from all different cities across the state. And it wasn't about whether this is legal or not. That wasn't at all being discussed. It was a sense of what a burden this has thrown on to the cities from the state. And it was just a lot of heat about, you've really put an awful lot of pressure on us. You've really thrown a lot on us, and you're not giving us very good help. And there was attempts for questions, and it was, sorry, we don't have time. And it was, it was, uh, really quite an interesting hour, for what that's worth. But I have to give Kyle an awful lot of credit, and the staff as well. Frankly, we're ahead of the game compared to many of the cities that I talked to at that meeting, where many were, um, just waiting to see what the state's gonna do, hoping that the state's gonna make this easier for us. And, uh, by taking, uh, a more proactive approach, I feel that we've got a greater understanding of what we're faced with here, and, uh, we're in a good place, you know, making some steps here to have a good handle on this. To the specifics of the B-six question that you've got, though, this, uh, ordinance, as it's written, as you said, would allow retail sales in B-six now with no conditional use and no interim use permit, the way I read this. And I think that's what we were after, as Clara mentioned, to have a space that didn't require any hoop, didn't require a conditional use, didn't require interim use. It's just that, get your business permit, and here you go. And I, if I'm reading it right, that's the way it reads to me. Now, maybe I don't understand it, as you explained it, but I believe that's the way that this is, uh, written.
B-six is interim use?
I don't, I've had so many different revisions come across my desk, I hope I have the right one, but what I see under B-six is that cannabis retailer isn't, uh, defined there. We just go to a micro-business, a mezzo-business, a cultivator.
And so, by not defining it, I believe it just opens it to being considered... So, maybe it would be better to clearly either list it or not.
I think it would be better, just one way or the other, to clean it up. Typically, on a conditional use permit, and, and, and this is where, I guess, I'm not a hundred percent positive. If, let's say we did B-three with a conditional use, then yes. In a B-four, B-five, or B-six, it would be allowed without a conditional use. It would just be allowed to, but with an interim use, I don't know if the same rules apply. So, that's something I think I'm gonna have to talk with Ralph about, and I think it would just be better if we spell that out clearly in the ordinance, whether you, and I don't care one way or the other, if you just want a B-six without a interim use permit, or if you want it with a conditional use permit. That part doesn't matter to me. I just think, for clarity, for our sake, and for businesses' sake, that we just spell that out a little bit better.
Sure.
In that section. So, I will make sure that that happens with Ralph before...
Okay.
Monday.
One other thing that I would also then mention, it's not specific to this question, kind of a little bit beyond it, is you mentioned that the cities will have greater control in some of the things that the state has produced. You know, once we've got, uh, pre-approved application that comes to us from the state, as I understand it now, um, we will likely have more than one. And we will have the choice at the state, at the city level, to decide how many we're gonna have. So, we can have one, or we can have more, but we must have one. And so, we may choose to only have one, or maybe we'll have two, or whatever we choose for a number of potential licenses that we have. Well, when it comes to choosing that, we get to set the parameters for those, uh, accepted, uh, permits. And so, for example, uh, we might select a permit, um, parameter that allows only, or that prefers, uh, a local business over someone that's owned from, you know, Kentucky or someplace out of state, trying to find ways that would be best for our city. You know, if we're gonna have a business come to town from out of town versus one that's based here in town, if we've got an ownership, uh, parameter in that list that gives us the opportunity to pick a local business rather than one that just has the flashy presentation, we ought to be able to do that. So, and there'll be lots of other details insofar as how we can choose, you know, which license to approve or not. And I look forward to that discussion. I think that'll get pretty, we'll get into the, oh, forest on that one quite quickly, I'm sure.
I don't think we should put out an RFP.
I think we'll have plenty to choose from.
I just, the original ordinance you brought forth, the B-six didn't have any conditional use or interim, and I think we should leave that alone at B-six. That's kind of where I, when I seen this, I didn't think it was right, that the B-six was supposed to be included in on the interim part. And I think it's, we, we originally were, come forward on that, of just the B-six was just, that's where we're gonna be. So, that way, if somebody wants to come to town, don't have to jump through the hoops like we just talked about, like, right, the B-six, and be done with it. So, I think that's kind of what we talked about at our meetings.
And I, I, I think, to your point and to Tom's point, I think, rather than an interim use in a B-six, if you're gonna do anything, it would be a conditional use. It's allowed. And then, like I said, on a retailer...
I'm talking retail only, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. The odor control and some of the environmental air things are really the only things that we as a city have control over. There's some solid waste issues that, you know, might come into, into play with a retailer, but, so, just having a conditional use as an option might help you, uh, address some of those issues rather than trying to get them codified in another ordinance. That's, that's the, that's the only thing. When we get into some of these other industrial-type businesses, yeah, there's just a lot more, uh, from wastewater management to fire code, there's a lot of things that come into play that aren't kind of clearly spelled out. So, I would definitely say, for those types of businesses, you want to keep either the interim or the conditional use.
Thanks, Chief. Uh, and just to reiterate what Scott said, thanks to the work that you've put into this. Obviously, um, this is not an easy issue for any community to deal with, but, um, yeah, we, but we are, and we had a lot of good discussion. So, there's a motion to bring this proposed ordinance for consideration on Monday evening to the council. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next, we'll call in Bill Sonmore to talk about city IT systems. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning. So, here to talk about our, um, city IT system. And that's our operating system that runs all areas of our city. You're probably aware, as we've talked about over the years, we have had a homegrown IT system here at the city of Fergus Falls. Um, it was built and created internally. We had a long-term IT director that wrote all that, um, very brilliant person that was able to create that system. Been very happy with that system. It has served us well, um, you know, over the last forty-plus years. So, as times change, though, and retirements happen, we no longer have, um, consistent, um, you know, maintenance of that system. Our previous IT director is helping us out periodically when we need some help, but we are not adding to that system any longer, and just maintaining it, um, into the future, you know, would look to be a challenge. So, um, as staff, we went looking, what's out there? What are, what are other cities doing? Uh, I contacted our audit firm to find out, what are some cities that have implemented new systems, you know, in the not-too, too far past? And, um, we found some, and Sandy and I went to visit a city that, um, you know, similar size, twenty-thousand population, to see, um, what they were using. And they were using the Civic system. So, that's the one, actually, I'm bringing before you today and recommending that we would go that direction. But first, we started by seeing, how does this work in your city? You know, we, we looked at that. They were very gracious with us, um, brought in various staff, did demonstrations of, you know, really, how are they operating? So, then we came back here and contacted Civic Systems. We also contacted another vendor, BSNA, that another area city uses. So, you know, you don't wanna just look at one. We wanted to look at a, at a couple. We felt that Civic System matched, you know, who we are, a, a bit better, and, um, just really seemed to mesh with how things flow for us. So, then we, um, had Civics do a more in-depth, um, demonstrations by departments, so that all different departments can look at that. So, went through that process with them. When we did BSNA, we did kind of one overview, um, demo with them. So, we did do a demo with them, but that was more at the higher level, and we didn't bring in departments for that. That was more you and I, I think Dan and Andrew, I think, we looked at that, to kind of narrow it down. Brought Civics in on a department level, looked at all those areas. So, then looking at the, the very... So then looking at the, the various modules that we would implement. So in your memo, I put, you know, the accounts payable, that's how we pay the bills, accounts receivable, that's how we receive. The cash receipting, importing, community development, that's building permits, code enforcement, approvals, notifications, field inspections, the community portal. And we'll talk about that a little bit more, because you're gonna want to know, how does this impact the residents using the system as well? Department head dashboards, our general accounting, that we handle everything, project accounting, special assessments, and utility billing, of course, being a big one. That was something we really wanted to look at, you know, first, is utility billing, because that's all the money coming into the city, that's what the residents probably use the most. Since this memo, as I was looking this a little bit on Friday, I want to add also business licensing with the community portal and animal licensing. So that adds another twelve thousand, I'll say that, to what's in, in your memo. Flipping over to page two of the memo, so those are the modules we would look at implementing. There are also some optional ones we will look at as, you know, as we get implemented and see where that goes. This also has all the payroll in it. So we're basically replacing everything we have. We will be going off our AS400 system. The county has just done that not too long ago as well. I know you've implemented a new system. They were always our backup, because they were also on a AS400 and we would, you know, we were linked together and being each other's backup. So this new system, you know, allows us to go paperly, paperless inside city hall, the way we work as well. Like, you know, invoicing and all that, and approvals, and department heads watching their budgets, having dashboards to, to say, here's how, you know, how much you've spent year-to-date, and if you're approving this, here's how it's gonna affect your budget. And some good controls that way. Certainly nice standardized for utility billing. So when you look at the resident side now, if, if you want to go on and say, okay, how, how can I access my data as a resident? You're gonna be able to go in and, okay, if you want to go paperless, don't send me bills any longer, I want them paperless. You can check that yourself. You don't have to call into city hall to have that done. You can set up ACH payments, you know, automatic withdrawals on your own as a resident, instead of sending in your, you know, a void check, having us set it up for you. Look up your accounts, look up your history, apply for permits, pay for things. That will all be on our website. What am I missing with that, community portal? Just, it's kind of what you would expect, you know, elsewhere, when you're going in, even shopping for something. You know, you, you find what you want, you click and you purchase. So that is the goal of this, is to make it more usable for the residents as well.
Right. So when we looked at systems too, we were looking for efficiencies internally, and we saw that right away, just like so, and it's like AP for example.
Yeah.
Routing invoices and that kind of thing. But when we saw the community portal, and then you could have a link right on our, right on the website we have now, and one click, and then, and then you see everything you need to do right there. You can see do I pay in pagan bills, or then you can go pet license, or I want, I want to go to utilities. And you go to utilities, and you can see your current billing, and you can click other options to see all of your past bills. Those are the kinds of things that people have to call us for. Even, even to get their current balance, they have to, they have to call us and know that what they're paying is actually, and, and once they've made a payment, for example, on RedTrak, which works well, but once they've made that payment, they can't even see that they've made the payment. Like, there's no way to go in and did that work, they can't even go in and see that that happened. In, in this, with this community portal and this link, they're going to be able to see everything they need to see in the city. And that doesn't mean they can't pay with a check or that they have to use the portal, but there will be many people that will use it. And we know that because we get calls all the time, and we get, we get feedback all the time saying, you, you guys are like in a storm, why can't I, why can't I do this? Why can't I set up a recurring payment? So for me, it's just exciting to be able to say, yeah, this is, it would be exciting to say, this is coming. And then, and then in turn, the efficiencies we gain from the staffing stack. Yeah, I'm very excited.
That is good. That's something, well said and well summarized. Again, I want to reinforce, we have been happy with our system. Yes, it, you know, it might be cumbersome at times, but it's very tailored to the city of Fergus Falls. Anything we ever asked for, you know, oh, could this program be tailored for what we needed? A good example is Sandy has to do a state reporting form each year in the state format. Well, Tony years ago wrote a pro, program that summarized our data in the state forms format. So you can run that and apply it to that program. Things like that are not gonna be in this, but things like in the special assessment program are set up for Minnesota statute 429. They already have form letters in there. So Civic Systems is a subsidiary of Baker Tilly. We did not know that when we first, you know, inquired of them. We work with Baker Tilly, they're our bond consultants as well. Baker Tilly has a background in being a CPA firm, is how they originally started. So they come from a long line of audit firms and seeing what do cities need to do and how do they need to operate? So I'm confident that way, that will work well. Again, I want to reiterate, we do need to change. We do need to, to move to something different because we do not have the ongoing support of our current system any longer. You're not finding this language of our system taught in schools any longer. You know, there's other languages taught. Am I summarizing that accurately? So, you know, just finding that in the future. Again, I would be fine, you know, using our system till I retire, but we need to get ready for that next generation. I will be here for quite a while yet, but we do need to get ready for that next generation as well. But I am excited about, like Sandy said, all the things it can do internally and externally. So the next question, how do we pay for this new system? Because this is a very reasonable system. I do see to, in your packet, I put that cost of two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand. As of today, I want to up that to two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand. They've offered to allow us to pay that over three years at, with no interest. So I like that option, why not take that option, work that through the budget that way? So that would be seventy-eight-thousand-three-thirty-three per year. That's for the purchase and the install. There will be some travel costs on top of that, estimated at ten-thousand-two-forty-one. Yeah, Brian, you'd, you like that ending in one, because we were always joking how I never round anything up too much. So they didn't either, you can see that. But that's a not-to-exceed number, so if we do some of our training virtually with them, of course, we won't have that. We would have the option to go to their offices in Wisconsin. You know, if we wanted to send a small group, most of it will be done onsite here, you know, working here. That's, that's how that's really gonna work. But we have those other options. The hosting fees in the packet is forty-four-thousand-one-twenty-five per year. That will go up to forty-five-seven-seventy-five. So I added one-thousand-six-fifty, six-fifty for those other two modules that I want to add right from, as we go out of the gate. We will spread this between the general fund and the enterprise funds, because the enterprise funds, think of the utility billing alone, certainly needs to, you know, those utility funds need to pay for those utility modules. So with that annual cost, the hosting, because this is a web-based software application, we will always get the, you know, current updates every year with, with no additional fees for that. So we're paying for this initial install and training, and then those hosting fees and those annual fees cover all those updates and whatnot. So we're looking at two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars upfront, forty-five, just about forty-six-thousand dollars a year after that. Now, under our current system, where we own our mainframe computer, it's housed right in this building, we do have annual costs that we need to pay now. And that is about forty-four-thousand-two-hundred that we're currently paying annually, that we will no longer need to pay. So that's pretty much a wash from the hosting fee to what we're currently paying for various things. There may be a few other things that we won't have to pay for any longer as well, as we dig more into that. We also budget about thirty-six-thousand dollars a year, you know, to save for that next AS400 replacement. That's what we've always done, you know, put the money away. So four years later, five years later, when you need to buy that system, you've got the money in the bank. Well, we won't have to be doing that anymore, because we're not gonna be replacing that system. Now, we'll have some servers locally that you're also planning for, and we, we do that as well. And then we, we used to have two people in our IT department. Now we have one, Dan Knutson's our IT manager. Our systems analyst left the employ of the city this year. And when we knew we had to go a new direction here, we didn't fill that position, because we thought, we better see where we're going. This will all, you know, the Civic system would be supported by that company. So we're not proposing that we replace that position. So certainly the savings from not filling that position then can go towards this purchase as well. So that's our plan, that's, I think over the long term, we can see some cost savings with this as well. As you can see from staffing, not needing as much staffing here, working and writing on programs. So it'll be more, you know, the day-to-day maintenance of us users that can be kind of a pain sometimes, but.
Your Honor, I make the recommendation, then I've got some questions for Bill.
So we got a motion to bring this to the council to recommend that we purchase and install the system, something like the second that, Scott. Thank you. Go ahead, Anthony.
Thanks, Bill. I appreciate your enthusiasm this Wednesday morning. And I do agree that we need to get into the 21st century on it. But, I mean, what would be, I've got five questions, or six questions.
I hope I have six answers then.
Implementation, timing?
Oh, yep. I put that in here and I failed to mention that. We're looking twelve to eighteen months out, from the time we sign the contract with them. So if you approve this on Monday night, we can get a contract signed. Then we're at least a year or more out, year to a year and a half out.
The next question was the historical data, would that be available through the portal? Or would that be just archived in city hall?
Another good question, and I was gonna bring that up, so I'm glad you asked that. Currently, again, for us inside city hall, we have access to data to January first, nineteen ninety-two. So way back. We're not gonna import all that data. Probably three years to five years at the most is what, so we will be importing historical data. I'm guessing three years, looking to my cohorts here, but three to five years.
Then the, was the backup of the system and security of the system?
That is all done by.
Civic.
By Civic, yeah. Dan, do you have more knowledge on that?
They just take care of all the updates, they take care of backups, the security. All of those aspects are covered by that cloud-based service, which is software as a service. And that's how they sell it, that's how they promote it. So we don't have to deal with that on packet like we do.
Right. And then would there be any hardware updates at the city? You know, obviously, I know, you, you get a new software program and then your computer that's on Windows 10 won't run it. So you, you then have to kind of get a new computer.
Not currently, we're pretty up to date on all our machines, at least Windows 10, or it doesn't matter. And so there shouldn't be anything that we would need to buy here to run that song. And, and there is a mobile device application with it as well, so it runs on all our mobile devices. You don't even need a computer, especially for all the residents.
Right. So the, a, a city resident would be able to put an app on their phone and log into their account? And then whereabouts in Wisconsin was my last question?
What's that?
Whereabouts in Wisconsin?
What town is it again? I think it's Madison, I think. Yep, right on the cover. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. That was it. Here end of my questions.
I just got a question, Bill. Is this the same, was, maybe it was about a year, a little over a year ago, when we were talking about the same thing? What company was that that was recommended done?
So that was one module, and that was a different company. That was AE2S, that's advanced engineering. And that was just a capital improvement planning module that they do for, for cities and just capital improvements. So we're not looking at that at this point. We'll see how this goes for capital planning, because it has a whole, the whole fixed asset series. And we should be able to be covered on this. And like I said, even with our existing system, that's been very tailored. You know, this system isn't gonna be perfectly tailored to us. But again, we know we need to change, but it's gonna do so many things so well. You know, just as an example, city of Sartell, St. Joseph, and Wake Park are all on this system. So our fellow finance people there, you know, we've talked to, but yep, different company.
I was just curious.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night for consideration. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Sandy. Thanks, Dan. Uh, next up, we'll call on our public works director, Guy Taylor, about a purchase equipment for the landfill. Good morning, Guy.
Morning. Thank you, Your Honor. In the landfill operations, we have a bulldozer that's used for crushing, pushing, covering, all kinds of stuff in that operation. The current bulldozer is twenty-plus years old and has had some significant maintenance. Things need to be done in the last few years. One of the problematic things with that dozer, even though it's John Deere, we like to support John Deere, it is a, a model that's built in France. So sometimes we've waited for months for some parts, so that's been problematic. But anyway, the, one correction from the memo is the number of hours. I asked how many hours were on the unit and put that on the memo. But in the cab of the dozer, it says hour meter was changed at three thousand hours. So that's what, or fifty-seven ninety-eight hours. So now it has fifty-seven ninety-eight plus three thousand, so close to nine thousand hours on this current machine. So it's getting tired, and the current model that we've had, Ziegler quote for us, is a CAT Model 963 track loader. It's got what they call a waste package, it's built for landfills. It's got guards and covers and stuff that prevent some of the vital parts from getting hit and punctured from the debris that it's traveling over. So the purchase price is four-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-three-eighty-two and sixteen cents, not rounding with that. And trade-in of thirty-four thousand and a state contract credit of one-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-two-seventy-six-eighty-eight. So the four-thirty-eight-three-eighty-two-sixteen would come from the equipment fund, and we've been planning for that, and it's budgeted for.
Thanks, Guy. And we can recommend council consider this money.
I make a recommendation.
Thanks, Anthony.
I'll do.
Thanks, Scott. Questions for Guy?
What's, what's the delivery time on it?
Probably about six months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to bring this to the council. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Oh, same sign, that's approved, thank you. Next, we'll call on Brian Uvar, our city engineer, to talk about the final design for Junius Avenue from Union to Cascade.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Good morning. Yeah, back in June seventeenth of this year, we had a preliminary project hearing for this project. Since then, the council passed a resolution to proceed with the project plans and specifications. So since then, I've been working with interstate engineering and I secured a professional services proposal for an amount of one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-ten dollars for the final design of this project. I want to note, this amount is consistent with the total estimated project cost that was presented back on June seventeenth. So if acceptable, we'll start the plans and specifications, and I'll be presenting those to you soon, so we can start authorization advertised for bids. Just want to note, we're proposing that we'll accept bids, recalculate the final cost assessments, conduct a final cost hearing, and then put contingent, award the project contingent on that. This is what we've been doing for the past years. That has been, I guess, very beneficial to the city. So at this time, I'm requesting resolution accepting interstate engineering's professional services proposal for final design in amount of one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-ten dollars.
Thanks, Brian. Just real quick, what would the construction estimate be, what, a time date? Is it, is it this construction season yet?
Well, that's, we're gonna see what market pricing does, we could end with alternatives having.
That's the goal, though?
A goal, yes, contractors are starting to get a little, get full at this time, we've had a lot of amount of rain this spring, and subsequently, that has pushed back a lot of contractors as well too. So we're gonna try and add flexibility, one thing, working days, trying to get it done this year, I do not like building roads in late fall. However, like past projects, if we do a working day contract, like we're doing on some of our other projects that we took bids last year, do a working day with substantial completion in fall, it gives that a lot of flexibility and resources for the contractor that, it, pricing has been very conducive for that, so we'll figure out some way.
Sounds good, thanks, Brian.
I'll make it, I got a question too.
Thanks, Scott, someone like the second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Lord, go ahead, Scott.
And what was our pro, what was our number back in June?
Uh, one-point-nine million.
One-point-nine?
Mm-hmm.
Questions? I know that this is obviously a road that's in dire need of.
Yes, it is.
The work, so that's kind of my question on the timing of.
Getting dug up today, too.
It's getting dug up, you know? There's a motion to bring this to the council on Monday, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both same side, that motion carries. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, I don't believe there's anything else to come before the committee this morning, so we are adjourned, have a nice day, everyone.